Okay, welcome everyone to the February 14th. Yeah, the 14th meeting of the Hadley Select Board. Tonight is also a tri-board meeting. So for the first portion of the meeting, we're going to go over the initial budget presentation as well as the town meeting work. So we do have representatives here from the Finance Committee as well as the School Department. And I guess I should say happy Valentine's for everybody watching at home. So with that, David, do you want to start with the budget presentation?
Sure, I'd be happy to. So the Select Board had set the deadline of February 7th for the preliminary budget proposal. We had a nice storm and so we deferred that till today. So this budget is balanced based upon the projected revenues, transfers, and recommended expenditures. The Select Board has established principles by which to adopt the FY '19 budget. First, there shall be no general proposition two and a half override. Second, the budget shall provide level services where possible, allowing for higher increases in non-discretionary budgets such as status assessments and other fixed costs. Third, the four firefighter positions that were created in FY '18, that is this year's budget, are to be retained and funded sustainably for FY '19. Fourth, in all areas of our control government shall be set on a sustainable course. That means at a minimum, the existing financial management practices and policies will be followed. And fifth, where there's a program to be expanded, those costs are to be shown separately. As per the instructions of the Select Board, the departments, rather than devolving their budgets in departmental silos as we've done in years past, came together as divisions. So General Government, Public Safety, Public Works, Culture and Recreation, Human Services, they came together as groups and heard the budget instructions provided by the Select Board. And as a division rather than as a department, it's not developed budget proposals which you see in front of you today. Just a note, when looking through the budgets and going into some of the details, in FY '18, the current fiscal year budget, we changed the chart of accounts in order to provide greater standardization and the ability to clean up a lot of clutter that had accumulated in the chart of accounts. And provide fewer special rules and the better ability to make meaningful comparisons across department boundaries such as comparing energy use between departments. That should be easier to affect now. It may be that some of the numbers, if you're trying to compare them to last year's or prior years, some of the numbers may not match up. Where possible, I've tried to make that explicit in the budget presentation and tried to simplify things so that it provides for a smooth reading. Goals and objectives for FY '19, these are the ones that either I developed or developed in consultation with the Select Board. First goal is public safety. We made a commitment several years back to increase our ability to respond to public safety service needs. We hired new police officers. We've provided for capital improvements for fire and police. And this current fiscal year, we attended four full-time firefighters, a deputy chief, another lieutenant, and two full-time firefighters. So Goal One would be to, in FY '19, to establishing sustainable funding for the enhanced public safety services that we established in FY '18. So keeping in mind four fire positions and keeping sustainable funding. Goal Two, Public Works. Okay, so Marlowe has done a lot of good work in the Department of Public Works, but where we need to focus our attention in FY '19 are the enterprise funds, particularly having to do with water and sewer rates. Rates were increased for both enterprise funds back in 2018, but they need to be reviewed annually. And these sewer rates will promote water conservation, achieve service solvency, and support needed capital improvements. Goal Three, Building Maintenance. Last year or this current fiscal year, we consolidated a lot of different line items into a single building maintenance budget under the control of the Department of Public Works. We increased that budget by $20,000 as well as providing $46,000 of transfers from other departments. This year, we're going to provide funding for maintenance position, which currently is on staff but is funded by through other means. So we'll be transferring some of that salary over to the building maintenance budget. Goal Four, Financial Management. We did a good job of that, starting with OPEB. We're going to increase our OPEB contribution by two and a half percent as per our plan to achieve the sustainable funding of OPEB over the long term. Keeping in mind, OPEB is a marathon, not a sprint, so we're in it for the long game. Free cash, last year, the Select Board in consultation with the Finance Committee established a new policy governing free cash. We recognized that we were spending entirely too much free cash on recurring items within the budget, and we wanted to scale that back over a period of years. We had a mixed result in FY '18. We actually did better than I think we give ourselves credit for. We had, we were able to withhold from, keep our, we had to increase our spending of free cash on recurring items within the budget to $275,000, which was considerably higher than what our target was. But we were able to retain over $300,000 of free cash, which we then used for capital projects, paying cash instead of borrowing for some of the argos that we had originally thought we would have to borrow for cruisers and the such. We were able to retain a small balance of $36,000 from that capital program for free cash. So this year, since we spent $275,000 in FY '18, we would be looking at a target of $200,000, reducing it by $75,000 per year until we're using no free cash for recurring revenues. I propose something a little bit more ambitious. I'm proposing that we spend $125,000 of free cash on recurring items within the budget. That will provide you with $87,000 surplus at the end of the budget process to be used for other items such as capital, using contract negotiation expenses, schools, and ambulance, and the other things that remain unfinished at this stage. So finally, that brings us to the Stabilization Fund. We do have a stabilization fund, which is in very healthy condition. It's above 12% of the non-operating revenue. It exceeds both our percentage targets and our total dollar targets. Our total dollar targets are $2 million in the stabilization fund. But over the long term, as you look at the performance of the stabilization fund as a percentage of the entire budget, it is steadily decreasing, and there will be a time when we will begin to struggle to maintain our goals of keeping a healthy stabilization account. So I'm recommending, I know this was unpopular in FY '18, so it's bound to be unpopular in FY '19, but I'm recommending a modest contribution to the stabilization fund.
We'll call it an adjournment.
Absolutely. Everything is taken under advisement.
We're just listening tonight, David, politely.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming to me. All right, so there are open issues with this budget. We have ambulance services which need to be secured, and I know we're going to be talking about proposals tonight. We have collective bargaining agreements. The negotiations have just started for three collective bargaining units. We have the non-union cost of living adjustments that need to be established. We have the management positions that we've been talking about in human resources, finance director, IT director. Those still need to come up with a plan for that.
But just a quick interjection. Is the School Department doing negotiations right now too, Ann?
We concluded all of our, all of our contracts have been settled.
Settled for the next three years?
We have, I should, I'm sorry, the last unit will ratify, and School Committee is expected to vote at the next meeting.
So it won't be public until, it won't be public until the School Committee vote?
Okay.
Great, thank you.
But I anticipate that in February that it'll all be settled.
Okay, good.
So the Community Preservation Act, we funded, we started using that more productively in FY '18, and so if we can continue to use that for our many capital needs on historic buildings, that'll take the pressure off the tax rate. The school budget, I think the number, and correct me if I'm right here, the number that was presented is not the number that's been given to the School Committee, or I don't know if there's been any number given to the School Committee at this point, but that's still very much an open issue that we need to settle.
So the information that we sent over to you, David, from the School Department, generally anticipated where we thought we were at, that has not been officially, the School Committee has copied on that email, the School Committee won't be discussing the budget in a lot of detail until their meeting this year. And that, as you indicated, there are a lot of variables still at play.
And so the school budget that's in here is strictly level funded at the moment?
Right now, it's level funded, but as I said to Superintendent Tenzie, that regardless of the number, the door is open. The dialogue needs to happen.
So our, what you see doesn't represent any additional programming or additional positions, unless there were positions added in FY '18 for students of the digital education program. The biggest factors for us that are at play is the 33% reduction of preschool grants and circuit breakers. Now, they first were threatening a 10% reduction, reversed, and now they're threatening to get rid of it all together.
So in water and sewer rates, we touched upon that earlier in the talk, but they definitely need to be examined, and I know that Marlowe is working on a program that will show us the effect of operational, the cost of operation, cost of debt, cost of future capital projects within the enterprise funds, and what that means in terms of rate increase in order to maintain both service solvency as well as fiscal solvency within the enterprise fund. And then just as a concluding comment, two things. First of all, when the divisions got together, and I was talking about the marching orders for the division rather than departments, we talked about the need to find cuts within our operational budgets. We also talked about the need for enhanced revenue in order to close some of the target gaps that were presented to them. In terms of revenue and enhancing that revenue, people came up with a lot of ideas, but all of that needs to go through either town meeting or it needs to go through the Select Board. So I've not shown any revenue increases in my revenue chart. So you're going to hear a proposal today to add, to double the demand fee, which is allowed by law for delinquent taxes and other charges through the Collector's Office. That alone would bring $30,000 to General Government Fund, and, but none of that money is shown, none of that increase is shown in the revenue. So every fee increase that you allow, that increases your revenue, provides a little surplus there. And then finally, it was very helpful for the divisions, the departments, to act as divisions. And so my recommendation is when we go forward evaluating the budget proposals, that we do this at the division level rather than the department level, because I saw a lot of good synergy and a lot of good cross-communication between departments that I don't think normally occurs.
And just, just when you were going through the items that aren't in here, you know, like the ambulance being a bit of a wild card, collective bargaining, et cetera, the other thing too is in looking at your expenses, you made approximately $289,000 of adjustments, the bulk of it actually being bringing the school back to a level funded position. But as always, I'm sure that there will be some conversation with the departments who may be advocating for what was taken out, but there may be other things that come out to offset that too. Well, before we get into it, I just want to thank the department heads in particular, I know a couple of you are here tonight, but this was the first time going through and trying this approach, and it seems like it worked pretty well. So, you know, people obviously were very engaged in the process and came up with a lot of good ideas, so thank you for doing that, those of you who are here and those of you who are not.
And thank you to David for-
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, David.
Putting this all together for us, we appreciate it.
Part of the bylaw description.
Well done, thank you.
Okay, so just in terms of, and we're not going to get through all of this tonight, obviously, because people are seeing it for the first time, but I'm just wondering, it might be helpful, David has a recap sheet in here, and I know he talked through it, or maybe to draw people's eyes to it, which is just the summary, David, of the revenues, expenses, what's coming from one-time free cash. I'm looking at the one on page, I think it's 19.
This is available on the website?
Yes, it is. If you go to the Town Administrator's website, it's there. If you go to the Board Docs for tonight, it's there as well. On 19?
Yep.
Are you talking about the one that's on page 25?
Well, I'm looking, the one on 19, it looks like it's titled "The Brief Summary of the Budget." Do you think there's a better one?
Oh, yes, I will, yes.
This one is just for free cash, it's going on the 25.
So we're looking at a total of $17,484 of revenues? And so what you said is that theoretically might, depending on votes and discussions, go up by another 125 or 150?
There is, yes, easily we can get up to $125,000 because you have $87,000 of free cash projected for the fall towns, so that's not allocated to anything. And you have a surplus of $36,000 of free cash that's already been certified, so you can easily achieve 125.
Revenue would be ongoing revenue, right? I thought that's what we were talking about, like SUSE offering of doubling the demand and all of that?
Yep.
And then expenses of $17,951, so your starting point was a shortfall of $466,000, and the proposal is that their free cash would be used for one-time expenses to the tune of $338,000. And that's in accordance with the policy to fund reserve funds. You're moving it from one balance sheet item effectively to another, so it's just from one bucket to another. It's not part of really operating.
Right.
And then $125,000 would be used from free cash to balance the operating budget.
What's the word on the cherry sheet? I mean, the first blush was terrible. I know the Senate had it the other day, has changed it all?
We got killed on our first cherry sheet. We've had a net loss of $112,000 from FY '18 to FY '19 based upon what the Governor put together. I've had a conversation with Representative Seibach, who's assured us that they can do better. So in terms of general governmental aid, in terms of Chapter 78, they can certainly do better. I think it's time during this election year, and everybody is up for elections, so now's a good time to get more money on the table, that if we get the legislature to fully fund the charter school tuition reimbursement, that would, that would bring another $100,000 into the town if they simply did what they're legally required to do, so.
What numbers have we used on this in prepared budget?
We've used the Governor's numbers.
Okay. So we're hoping for a little better then?
Hoping for a lot better.
Any other comments or questions for David from the Select Board? No?
Forge ahead.
Okay, and Finance Committee and Superintendent are here as well?
Great job, David.
Thank you.
Okay, so then I guess, well, and Annie had just said that the School Committee is going to be dealing with this at their meeting at the, next week? Two weeks, two weeks, so, okay. So then more to come from you in March, probably?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then how do we want to proceed then in terms of moving forward from a process standpoint with, you know, it sounded, the last I left off, I recall that the Finance Committee, I think, was advocating for having separate conversations with the divisions? Or were we going to do, I'm sorry, there's just been a lot going on today.
I think we were looking at separate at one point, but then we never had anything firm. We were, the duck is still up in the air.
I mean, another thing we can do is we can have the divisions come in front of the Select Board on a scheduled basis as we have in the past, have the Finance Committee present, and then to the extent you feel that it's, you know, necessary to have a separate meeting, you can always request one too. I mean, I-
So we have, we have one in this book already that everybody has put together. So everybody has already done their homework, put together what they wanted within their groups of safety, DPW, so on and so forth. So what else are we going to discuss, except we're waiting for the issues on where our money is coming from? And, you know, you can take your best shot at it now, but until we get closer to actuality, there's not much you can decipher. So what would be the purpose of having more conversation with these groups when you've already done this part of it?
Well, ultimately, your budget, so you want to make sure that-
So we're going on this right now without any changes, so what are we going to ask these other groups for?
There are places where I have made some changes to the requested budget. Okay, so let's take 490, for example. There's an item in there for $20,000 for senior center exterior repairs. If we're truly demolishing senior center in the next 18 months, I thought that that was excessive, and so I trimmed that budget by $10,000. Mr. Marlowe has come to me and said, "You can't possibly cut me that much. I need at least some of that money back." So you have to give them the opportunity to plead their case and make a cogent argument as to why they need that additional money that I haven't provided for them.
And what I'm thinking is that if, in fact, we may decide to run with some higher revenue figures, depending on some of these warrant discussions that we're talking about, and if in fact some of that is put back into the budget, then we may want to have some discussion about, after we have a better understanding across the organization of where some of these cuts have been made, kind of prioritize where we might want those monies to be applied. Plus, I think it gives the department heads an opportunity to have the face time with the Select Board, because there may be other, other things that aren't in the budget that set the stage for subsequent years?
There are some nifty ideas that I heard when talking to the divisions, and I think that, you know, you should, you should hear that from your department heads. It's a lot of good thinking going on, a lot of hard work, and trying to put things together in a different way that I think are worth knowing.
So is that their anticipation that they had wanted to do this?
I'm sorry.
Is that their anticipation that they were going to come before us? Is that how it was perceived?
Yeah, I think that, I think that they need to come before you and present their information, and there may be other ways that we can put this together than the way that we've done. Keep in mind that we, the department heads, acting as divisions, did a remarkably responsible job of putting together the budgets, but they had a very short timeframe to do that, and there may be additional thinking that's gone along that you may want to know about.
Wouldn't it be a better idea that if we all did it together, instead of trying to do separate meetings with everything?
That's what I'm saying, at least we started there.
I can't see where, you'd have to do two or three different meetings, you know? I think we got to hear it, you got to hear it, so you might as well hear it at the same time, right?
And then that would probably be okay. I mean, we, like, one year we did separate, last year we did it, you did it, we listened in. We could probably figure out something that maybe we can just work on.
We can always have separate discussions and then, you know, collaborate after that also if we choose to.
Yeah, I think that was the key, because we want to make sure that when we brought departments in, and both committees were speaking to them, if there's something we disagreed on, we didn't want to be hashing that out in front of department heads.
Yeah, that's why you should stay independent, in my, in my-
My opinion, well-
If you guys got questions, you may take a little bit longer than we do, or we have other questions that may take a little longer than you would, you know?
But I'd still like to know their questions. I mean, if they have questions that we should be aware of, then-
We're getting their minutes at our meeting all the time, and they're getting ours.
But I, but I think that it doesn't hurt if we're bringing in one group at a time to listen to the same things, and as I said, go back and rehash things amongst yourselves, and we can do the same thing, and-
In the effort to discuss efficiency, I would advocate the way we used to be done, where the Finance Committee took care of individual discussions after this was done here. Whatever can get put to bed where everybody agrees on these things, and then things that are not agreed upon are the things that we concentrate on, is what I would rather do amongst the individual department heads, the Finance Committee, and the Select Board, to come to some kind of ratification. If we have 10 departments which are just completely-
No brainers.
Easily adjustable, and it doesn't take everybody's time up so much time there, and we have 10 that we need to concentrate on, so let the Finance Committee do the interviews as used to be done. Okay, they take care of that. Everybody agrees, everybody works within the budget, that's fine. If that's done, it gets put over here. The three or four, hopefully, that need to be addressed and looked at, go over here, and we all sit together and kumbaya. That's my idea. Is that what you were thinking?
Yeah, yeah. I have no problem with the Finance Committee.
You need it.
Oh, I don't have a problem with it either. I was just trying to make it easier for them, that's all. Right?
It got so easy last town meeting that we proposed a budget, and they proposed a budget, and it didn't work, did it?
Because it doesn't make any difference.
So let them do what they have to do first.
I can still have my own thoughts on it, John. You have your thoughts.
I'm just asking for clarity, though, and I'm fine either way, you know, whatever, whatever works. But are we asking, are we asking the department heads to come in front of both groups, or are you saying have the department heads meet with the Finance Committee, and then only where there's an issue, have them come from the Select Board?
Yes.
That's what you're, that's what you're doing.
That's what I would like.
That's what, okay, I just wanted to make sure that that's understood. Okay.
I don't like it independently, but I'll go with that.
Yeah, well, and I, no, that is independent. So we're saying that the department heads would actually meet with the Finance Committee, not us unless there's a compelling issue, but a compelling issue meaning a disagreement, I guess. But the other thing I want to offer is the opportunity for department heads who may want to bring something in from the Select Board to be able to do that. I just don't want to carve them out of the communication process.
Absolutely.
But not mandated.
No.
Is that fair?
Yep, fair.
Good to you. Okay, yeah, I don't care. That's fine, okay?
So there's something good. The one point I'd like for some clarity, though, is so obviously one of our priorities, the big priority is the override, but we still have the needs of HR, IT, and Finance. Is it a priority to Select Board to try and carve out any money for that from this budget for this fiscal year in the event that the override doesn't go through? Because that's where I can see that a lot of the 10 no-brainer departments are what now we might go back and take another look at if we are trying to find the money for some of those things. That's just the wrench I can see that could get thrown into this.
What override?
Yeah.
That's another point to bring up, yeah. We also missed the last meeting, so.
I think we have some stuff to discuss.
See, this is where we need to discuss this stuff again, and again, and again, because some people just don't get it.
No, but I mean, right, right now, this budget is not, there's no override in this budget.
Right, that's what I'm saying, so we, we still have the identified needs, IT and our Finance. So override aside, is there any will right now from the Select Board to try and get some preliminary IT or some form of any of those needs into this budget? Because that would require a little more cutting or trimming, which would kind of throw a wrench in the whole, you know, the, the straightforward departments might just come in from the Finance Committee, and the more complex departments might come from the Select Board, because we may have to take another look at those straightforward departments if we're trying to find some more fat to trim for IT, HR, Finance.
Yeah, I still think we have our feelers out there to see what else is available without going for overrides, too, on some of these things with the IT and the HR. So I mean, you know, that's why we're like, okay, override, well, hopefully, we can maybe not have to do an override, because I don't think it would be well received right now at this point, is what I'm getting from community.
And I guess the way that, I guess the way that I'd look at it is, if in the course of the review, you come across something that makes you think, you know what, in the back of your mind, Human Resources, Information Technology, Finance Director, maybe we, we really ought to be thinking about this service, or how we're delivering that service to free up some money. I mean, I'd, I'd be very open-minded to hearing about that. I would be absolutely shocked if there's any fat in this budget. So I don't think we're going to find any of that. I think, again, we're talking about restructuring of some kind, and maybe, maybe in the course of your conversations, though, some of that, again, might come out, like David said, some of the department heads may have had some ideas that didn't make its way here. But if you think that there's merit to some of that, and you're like, wait a minute, if we actually did that now, we could free up, because we're, you know, when we're talking about these functions, we're not talking five thousand dollars, we're talking, you know, fifty thousand and up per function, so, and then that would be wonderful if we could find room to then, you know, move forward with some of the IT discussion we had. I don't think the Human Resources Group ever met, so I don't think we're, we're going anywhere with that at the moment.
Have you made it to any of the Hampshire County meetings?
Yeah.
Have there been any words of wisdom from them on HR or IT?
I think you need to find opportunities.
No, no discussion at this point?
Right now, so there have been a few letters, and Mr. Ford's exploring a couple options with, I think I explained Ford, working with Connecticut, and kind of plugging into their system, and the HR letter support that we all, or you guys have assigned, and sort of, kind of exploring their regional programs. Frankly, they're all holding their breath right now, trying to work with state legislators to try and solve their financial situation.
Two of them, they're losing.
Yeah, retiring. And, and after that, we're going to take another hard look at regional services, because I'm still proposing that regional services should really be the heart of that organization, and try and find a way to make it a moneymaker, but next that's really working with state legislators.
Survival.
And I think, I was listening to the fact that we had this conversation, I don't know if it was at the last tri board or the one before, that it's already been reviewed and that there's no fat in the budget, and that's what you were kind of indicating to us, that if these things were going to be funded, it was going to have to be on an override. So that's the way I'm looking at this budget that we have in front of us. I don't think you're going to find three positions worth of fat in here to be able to chop out of there, and I don't know if it's fair to our department heads to ask to look for that at this point in time. So let's, it, it's my opinion, if you guys sit down and you go over with a fine tooth and comb and understand increases, decreases, opportunities for savings, opportunities for different departments to cross-use and figure that out like we did with the Maintenance Department, that's great, maybe there's some opportunities there. If not, certainly understanding the plight of the departments and what they're looking for, for monies, needs, and future aspects of what they're looking for, let's understand that going. You guys sit and work that out to the best of your abilities as to, what everybody can do. Whatever can't be worked out, or whatever there's, there seems to be some question about, we'll all sit and talk about it and see what we can do to come up with, with savings, or, or then we'll talk about overrides, as to what, what the actual numbers should look like at that point in time.
I think that makes sense, I think we're on the same page. It's mostly like, trying to get a feeler out for how you're prioritizing those things, because there's still a little wiggle room, and just off the top of my head, but with the free cash amount, if we want to be a little less kind of progressive with that and go back to the two hundred and twenty-five, that would free up an additional position, for example. Or if the charity comes back a little more favorable in the coming weeks or the coming month, might open up some cash to explore the Finance, HR, and IT.
And that's, I think, where we, we would absolutely prioritize.
But then we still have ambulance collective bargaining. This is the end of school.
When they're already, they're already number in there for the budget, for the ambulance that we have now, so it's just a matter of what the, what else we might have to add to that.
All right, so, everybody comfortable with this, with how we're going? So I guess the next step then is really for, for you guys to start scheduling those meetings? Okay? Three of the department heads for that? Four, sorry, sorry, Patrick, bye.
Five, Ann.
Oh, boy, yeah, that's right, Ann, you have got the schools going there, too. Okay.
Absolutely.
All right, so we okay with the budget to move on to the warrant? Okay.
I am, unless, do you have any questions?
Nope. It's going to take a while, though, for it to go through.
Absolutely.
You have copies of the warrants available, I've sent it to you electronically. Right, you can have it on the table, so if people want to grab this up.
Do you, do you have one of these in? Mike, do you remember the snapper on the end?
Can we give one to Valerie?
Yeah, Finance Committee, one of you guys giving, giving yours up, too, are you going to share? Okay. No, they're all set.
All right, so, four o'clock today, the deadline passed, and by the time it passed, we had thirty-one articles or reservations for articles. This sounds like a large number, but a lot of these can be reduced or combined. We have eight of those articles that can go on the consent agenda, if you look in the title page, I've got this all mapped out for us. So just going through the first three, these are the standard ones that we have at every annual committee. Grants Chapter ninety and short-term borrowing. Article four is for fund balances, and this is where we go through our list of capital projects, and we return to the original pot of money, any surplus that's being left in that, those articles, and that are unproductive. We've had three requests for revolving funds that would require an infusion of cash of about six thousand dollars. Article six is the budget adjustment, it says FY eighteen, it should say FY, oh, excuse me, Article six is FY eighteen budget adjustment. This is a, this is a reallocation of money between debt and interest in order to pay down more principal and pay less in the way of interest. This is in our, to our advantage, it could be on the consent agenda. Article seven is the FY nineteen omnibus budget, and that's obviously what we're going to be talking about for the next couple of months. Article eight is the water filtration plant filters. We put twenty-six thousand dollars away every year until we've achieved ten years of savings, and then we use that to replace the membranes on the ultrafiltration plant down on Bay Road.
I thought we went from ten to twenty, didn't we? Twenty-six was the actual figure.
Yes, the second-
We went from two to twenty.
That was the projected twenty, two hundred and sixty thousand for the ten-year.
Okay.
Aren't these a better membrane that have a little longevity, or no?
They're all forecasted for ten years.
Okay, all right.
Ten years, it goes up.
Article nine is the capital plant for the spring, it consists currently of three items, the additional funding for the fire substation, that's about eight hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
And that number stood, no?
That's the most recent number I got from Phil.
Okay.
We have five thousand dollars to redesign the town website, to make it much more interactive for the departments, and then we have a thirteen thousand dollar item forward to replace the school warning lights on Route nine, one of which has collapsed, and the other one is non-working as well. So that's for two, or for one?
And that's for two. I'm waiting on some more quotes. We're right around that figure for solar power, we'll no longer pay electricity for it.
Articles ten and eleven possibly be combined, but they would just-
I was asking if the state was responsible for those lights?
No.
We have, we have to pull the appropriate permits with the state, but they're our responsibility.
They're, they're originally, how far back were those installed originally? Were that?
I couldn't find, I couldn't find how far back, but those have been a long, long time. I think the history also up here was when there was an elementary school further up here, so I don't know how many years ago that was, but that one should come down this way, a little closer to Hopkins when it gets done, the new one.
I don't know, have they been up since Russell School, Hooker School yet? As long as I can remember.
Yeah, I don't think any of us know how, how ancient those things are, but they're ancient enough that one of them fell over.
Okay.
Articles ten and eleven, they may be able to be combined, this is an idea that I've, I'm exploring with the Superintendent about setting up a stabilization account that would be controlled by the school committee in order to prevent wild mid-year swings in their, in their expenses. Article twelve, demand fees, and this is something that Ms. Kowalski's going to come tonight to talk a little bit about, but it's a proposal to double the demand fees for delinquent taxpayers who owe money to the collector's office. Right now, the, the demand fee is fifteen dollars, the state allows us to do thirty dollars, that would increase our revenue by about thirty thousand dollars if we did that, but this requires a town meeting. Number thirteen, marijuana sales tax, we already adopted this at two percent, the law changed, and we're now allowed to have three percent, so I'm going to go for the additional percentage point on that. Fourteen, this is something that we may be able to combine into Article one, this is a gift from the Friends of Council on Aging for various programs at the, at the senior center. Fifteen, this is something that we've talked about, and the Assessor's support, it's a real estate exemption for elderly people in the town of Hadley. Sixteen is on your consent agenda, it's administrative fees for the CPA committee, and then the CPA committee has received two requests for funding, and they're sorting through that, we should hear in a month whether these can come forward. Article eighteen is the appointment of the treasurer and collector, they're currently elected positions right here, this is something that the Select Board has asked me to put on the agenda.
I didn't ask you to put it on there.
I think you all did.
But I didn't ask you to put it on there.
No, I did, with your permission, I remember. Ray, remember that meeting?
I do.
Okay.
Article nineteen, the police department have asked for revision of our annual control bylaw. Article twenty, this is a mosquito control district article, this was something that Charlie Nicky came in front of you and asked for a commitment to support the mosquito control district. This needs to be researched. The police department has asked for a nuisance bylaw, this is actually something through the police department presented to me on behalf of the fire department and the building inspector, but this would help take care of some of the structural issues that we have in town. Number twenty-two-
Specifically the graffiti and the falling down-
Graffiti and falling down structures, et cetera. Twenty-two is stormwater bylaw, we had a grant to revise all of our bylaws having to do with stormwater. This is under review by planning board as well. Planning board has asked for four reserved spots, so that's Articles twenty-four through twenty-seven. Article twenty-eight is a petition article to change the way that we handle our annual elections, or more accurately, how we count the votes for our annual elections, as a form of instant runoff balloting. Two articles are petition to either move the senior center from the proposed location on the Hooker School lot to the recently acquired lot at the intersection of Stockbridge Road and River Drive. The second petition is to rescind the senior center funding altogether. And then the final article is a petition to rescind the recreational marijuana moratorium. This petition did not achieve the required number of signatures to have it placed on the ballot on the warrant, requires ten and receives five, so if you decide that you don't want to see it there, you can remove it. If you support it, you can keep it there.
It didn't get the signatures?
It got five signatures. It got ten signatures, but only five of them were registered Hadley voters. You need ten registered Hadley voters.
Then it's off.
I have no appetite for this, is that-
I don't either, take it off.
Should be a lot by there, it is?
Second.
Motion made in second, are they all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No.
Want to go down?
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
What do you want to discuss?
The state's dragging our feet, we're dragging our feet, and the people have voted in Massachusetts about this.
Yeah, with this, we're still waiting on the federal government.
Yeah.
So there's a bunch of slam dunks in here, if you guys want to take votes to support. The consent agenda items are pretty straightforward, you can make some progress tonight if you wish, or you can defer that.
Folks want to do that tonight, or do you want to hold and do a future meeting?
I don't care, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda. Pretty straightforward.
You got a couple portions.
On the consent agenda, or do you have the consent agenda? These are the consent agenda, one's a mark there.
As a town meeting participant, I am often confused, because you take articles not in succession, is there any way to change the numbering of these articles to all the consent agenda articles?
Or in a row?
In a row.
Can we do that?
Absolutely, you can do that.
Yeah, I think that's a very reasonable suggestion. Does anybody have a problem with ordering all the consent, yeah, makes good sense. Could you do that?
Absolutely, you can do that. You don't even have to take a vote to do that.
Down the table.
Has it been second?
No.
Second?
Do you have any question on consent items, or are we okay with those?
No, consent's also.
Okay, all right, motion made in second, are they all in favor of the consent agenda? Aye.
Aye. The Finance Committee in a similar position that the consent agenda can be approved, these are articles that you see every single year.
Missing a background, it matters to them.
Well, I, I think we can just probably do it next time, I mean, we'll go through them next time, that way, just, just because it's the first time looking at it, let Terry take a quick peek.
Always trying to move the football.
Yeah.
Okay, is there anything else then for our tri boards this evening?
If you would take a vote to close the warrant, that would be fine.
Can I, can I ask a question, is this something?
Sure.
Yeah, of course, just a couple of questions, the school committee had it at their last meeting, on the recommended school stabilization, is that, would that be, where would that money come from?
The, this all has to be worked out, but we talked about taking a sum from this general stabilization account, transfer it over to the newly created school- stabilization account, transfer it over to the newly created school stabilization account. And then we have to appropriate money so that it can be used as needed. So there's two steps that need to happen. You have to make the transfer because that's all you can do from one stabilization account to the other, and then you have to do an appropriation.
Thank you.
Sure.
We haven't, we haven't talked about it yet.
You haven't talked about it?
I know. I'm already thinking out loud here.
Yep.
Seven was connected over the last couple of weeks, so the finance committee went over this. So if we were to go for an override, which is finance, I T H R, would that be a part of Article Seven? Would that have to be a separate item that we can run the warrant now, or can we make it on the floor, just logistically trying to figure it out?
In general, the, it depends on what you want the override for, but let's say it's for operational purposes, then it would be built into Article Seven, and we would do that as part of the motion for Article Seven.
Why wouldn't you do it separate? Why wouldn't you lower on the budget and then ask for the override, so that if it doesn't pass on the, in the ballot that you're not?
You have a number of different ways of doing it, and without knowing the particulars of what's being suggested, you would, you could do it separately, but I would, I would say build it into your omnibus budget as best as you possibly can.
So if it doesn't pass at the ballot, doesn't that, does that necessitate an additional meeting?
You could set it up that way. I wouldn't. I would set it up so that it's a contingency, so you pass a budget that you know you can afford. You add to that budget the amount of the override, and then put in language that says, if the voters approve, then the budget is this much higher, but if they don't approve, then you're going to go with your original budget proposal.
I agree with Jerry. I think we should just go for the budget for now and then whatever we want.
Or if we can just in a future meeting, discuss the pros and cons of either way. My gut feeling is right now that it's a lot cleaner and simpler if we do it separately.
Yeah, it's not so confusing.
Well, it doesn't draw you back into a problem of having a, a problem with the budget that you just got done passing.
Yeah.
But I'm glad there's options available.
There are many options available.
Just want to make sure that it'll get on the warrant in some fashion. Because if we want to...
Right, you're...
So our drop dead deadline for that would be April 25th. We have to post on the 26th, so we would have to have all that language vetted by, by council by the 25th and ready for signature.
So any other, did you say you had a couple of questions?
Apparently, I just was making it so worth to get attention. I actually only had one.
Okay. The next time you come.
You had our attention.
I know.
I felt so important for a moment. That's it, just wanted, thank you.
Okay. So are we all set then with the tri board portion of the meeting?
No, I got a question, I got a couple of questions here on this one that the finance committee might be interested in. The stormwater gap that the state has implemented, where are they with the lawsuit with towns that are going against this MS4 rate? How many towns are there?
So I don't have a figure for the number of towns, but there's a, there's a lot of confusion over the stormwater requirements. As you remember, the EPA issues the stormwater permit, the MS4. Mr. Trump's administration has put the federal enforcement of MS4 on hold for one year. That year is going to be up in June 2018. Whether they continue that hold or not, I don't know. See no information. But the Massachusetts Department of Public, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection co-administers this MS4 program, and they say they're not, they are not going to enforce it, but they're not going to relinquish control or the requirements that the towns have to adhere to by. So that's created a certain amount of confusion as to what we need to be doing.
So the federal government doesn't fund it, the state doesn't fund it, and they're not really going to apply most of these rules and regulations to towns at this point, because they've got active lawsuits against them already.
Well, here's a couple of things. First of all, what is it about MS4 permit that we actually do like? What is best management practices that we haven't been doing, but we should?
Can I interject here just one quick second to make sure everybody's on the same page? Are you saying we should take 22 off of here because it's not a, because I think 22 is not whether or not we're going to be, this is about illicit connections and disconnects of storm drain sewer system.
Yeah, it's the whole...
Why is this on there?
It's the whole...
Two things.
Is it because of MS4?
Yeah, two reasons. First of all, is it best management practices? Yes, it is.
Okay.
Two is that somebody may be pulling a trigger on, on MS4 at any time that, and we may have a very short horizon in which to comply with the requirements. If we have the opportunity to move the football in a planned and orderly way now, we should take that opportunity and move it forward. This doesn't cost you anything to do.
What's it going to cost us?
MS4 will cost you operationally and capital wise, but this particular thing will not, will not cost you. I don't have that figure out.
We had it though. It was $580,000.
No, that's what we appropriate.
$390,000 for the first five years of the project.
That's what we appropriate for the first five years of the project. What is this going to cost us?
Implementing number 22?
Yes.
Nothing. So the other thing to think about is that MS4 is driven by what happens in Long Island Sound, and as you know, that there's that dead zone where the mouth of the Connecticut River empties into the, into the Long Island Sound, and that dead zone is rather large and it has no sustainable marine life in it at all. Apparently, all sorts of nasty things are happening down there. That's not going to go...
Blame on Jersey like everything else.
That's not going to go away.
The Gulf Stream is carrying it.
I think, I think an important piece of it is there's been no information whatsoever that it's going to go beyond the exactly the one-year suspension of this thing. It's going to, I'm being told it's going to take effect July 1. We're still going to have to have our NOI in by September 29th, I think it is. And part of, part of one-year one going into year two was rewriting the stormwater bylaws, which was PVPC working with us, which were, were in collaboration with that one, so...
So the people that are against this, what are they doing? Are they actually passing their bylaws on their town?
I haven't heard any information on, on the law, you know, as far as the communities in the lawsuit or anything, John. I haven't heard anything recent.
So the bylaw review was handled through a grant through the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, so again, the overview and the study process, thinking about how it, how it does, our existing bylaws do or do not comply with the new requirements. All of that was funded by a grant. That grant had three other towns involved. I want to say Williamsburg is one of them, and I can't remember the other two. I don't know what those towns are doing in terms of preparing a warrant for their annual town meeting or compliance. I think, I think what we need to do is we need to be aware that Long Island Sound's not going to clear itself up on its own. We may be living in an anti-regulatory environment right now, but one of these days, someone's going to say you need to jump through these particular hoops. If we could do this now, best management practices in such a way that it's not costing you money now, and it's avoiding headaches and panic and scramble later on, I say that we do it.
So we'll have opportunity to have further discussion on this, right?
Yep.
Did you have another one, John?
Yeah, I was. Do you have a list of those towns?
I'll have to gather them.
Can you get it for me? I'll call them myself then. Well, I mean, we're talking about these and voting on them anyway.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have this on every agenda from this...
Yeah. All right. I just think that's going to open us up to a big financial issue down the road. And, you know, I just, the whole mandate seemed to be way out of control originally when it first came out, too. And then when I seen some of the, there was a few bigger cities involved and opposing to this thing. And I don't know why we're just following a little line in the sand. The state, the state has met us on Route Nine right down the middle. They've been great to us, you know? You know what I'm saying? And I'm sure they're going to be great to us, you know, for the next section of their construction job, which we're probably going to fight tooth and nail all the way through. So, you know, if the state's not going to take responsibility for some of this stuff in the feds, then I don't, I just don't see them dumping any more costs onto the taxpayers at this point right now.
I'm with you if there's...
If it was that, if it was that bad, DEP would be down our throats right now already and saying, clean this up, clean this up, clean this up. They've been doing it with fuel tanks, they've been doing it with heating oil tanks right now. I think this is just overregulation.
Okay. Anything else for the tri board meeting?
I'll make a motion to close the warrant.
Make a motion to close the warrant? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made in second. Is it all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Warrant closed. All right. And I guess that concludes the tri board meeting. So we are going to roll into our normal select board business. So first, this evening, we have the consent agenda. We have approval of minutes from November 15th into September 6th meetings. We have many payroll and council payable warrants that are too numerous to read off here. The Class II auto dealer license for ZG Motors, and the proprietor is Armani George. Another common vehicle license for Genji LLC. Another common vehicle license for Hadley Broad LLC doing businesses sweep up. We have a DPW appointment, because it's the end of the probationary period, that would be for Daniel Kelly. We have DPW permit and fee updates, a driveway permit and excavation trench permit, a DPW surplus property, surplus vehicles to be listed on municipal, and we have a list attached. A one-day liquor license request from Western Mass Climbers Coalition for Central Rock Gym on February 10th. Another one-day license for the Food Bank of Western Mass, the Maple and Mimosas North Hadley Sugar Shack on March 3rd, and a one-day liquor license for the top of the campus, the Kevin Hart Comedy Show at the Mullins Center to be held on March 9th. And then we have administrative fees update for the Hadley Conservation Commission and their permit filings.
And if we could remove that last one because it's for additional time.
Okay.
So moved on the consent agenda, and is there any, just to make sure that the, on the liquor licenses, they've been cleared by the...
Second for discussion.
Police, chief, chief of police, and sorry, chief.
Second for discussion?
So, so the only thing about the, the top of the campus one-day liquor license is that that needs to be inspected prior to the event.
Fire department.
Yeah.
Same with the, the rock climbing games, just, we just wanted to make sure that they maintain their occupancy limit on that level.
That's why I wanted to ask if that's not been cleared by you or not. It's good.
ZG Motors, that's not theirs?
Does he need to clear anything? Mike, do you need to clear anything on that rock climbing wine thing?
Do you have any time?
I'm sure I already have.
Okay. Just want to be sure.
And then, John, have a question on the location of ZG Motors?
I think Mr. George is here.
You're talking about Z Motors. That's next to the Chinese restaurant at the end of Amherst.
Yes.
I'm at 249 Russell Street. It's right next to Hastings Fence.
Next to what?
Hastings Fence.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Where the campers are first, in the driveway, yeah.
Hastings.
Hasty Fence.
Hasty Fence. Ceramics.
Not at Hastings Fence, they got to the fence there.
You're the next house over from me.
Yeah, next, two houses over.
Yeah.
Okay. Motion made in second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Except for...
Except for the Hadley Conservation.
No.
DPW?
DPW.
And you're abstaining?
Upstated, yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. So we do have time. Is anyone here this evening for public comment?
The municipal buildings committee had asked me to, would it be appropriate at this time to talk about that? They asked me if they could, again, talk a little bit about North Hadley Hall, and I know we had some discussion at the symposium that we had, as to a lot of different things that need to be addressed. They thought if everybody who, they'd like an agenda item set up for, for, to have a meeting regarding that, and if anybody who had a, an issue conservation, I mean, historical society, anybody that had any issues regarding that, if we could sit and talk about it, and if we could get written down what the questions are that need to be addressed, like whether or not we can park on the field there, or whether or not that's been addressed. We haven't heard anything back regarding any of those questions that we had talked about.
Are you talking about at a select board meeting? They're separate?
It's, I would just assume it was a select board meeting. We'll set it up for a first time, first thing, and we'll bring the committees in, whoever needs to discuss this. I know planning board has an idea as to what they think should go there, but there's other opportunities, so that we can get this bid put together and get it out.
Okay. I've got that down. You've got that down? All right. So we'll try to slide that into an upcoming agenda.
Excellent. And David, if you could get back to the municipal buildings committee and let them know that we discussed. Thank you, sir.
So anything else during the open comment period or public comment period? Okay. If not, then we will roll forward to...
Fees.
Fees. So, okay. So for fees, we've got two, I think, two or three discussions here. We have the demand fees that we were talking about at our tri board meeting, and I see Sue Kowalski, our tax collector, is here to discuss that. Do you want to start there?
Yep.
Okay.
I just wanted to touch base with you folks and get your feedback on this, because back in 2009, when the legislation was proposed, we went from a $5 demand fee to a $15 demand fee, which I felt was appropriate. The way the legislation was written was whatever demand fee you chose to do was across the board. So on a $5 motor vehicle or a $5,000 real estate, it's required to be the same. So when David came to us and said, we need to look at, for the 100 series budgeting, general government budgeting, we need to find $30,000 in new revenues, or we need to cut something from general government, I said, well, last year I collected $29,864 in demand fees.
At 15.
At 15. So we can pretty much do that in one fell swoop. However, your neighbor, or your relative, or yours, or yours, or yours, when they get a $30 demand fee on a $5 motor vehicle trailer excise, will call you first.
Or me.
Or you. So...
I'm like, I know, I'm like once in a while.
How much do you pick?
Like once in a while.
So you're going to take phone calls on this as well. I, you know, I have corresponded... I, you know, I have corresponded with our state reps, center senators, and my association to ask that the legislation be rewritten to allow towns to do different demand fees for different types of tax.
So like de minimis, anything below.
Exactly. And nothing has happened with that. So, you just need to be aware, if town meeting, and I would say, probably most of the people who attend town meetings are very timely under tax bills, it's just.
Why can't we do that now?
The other 3,300 or so that.
Why can't we do that now? Up to $1,000, one?
We can't, it's not, the legislation doesn't allow us to. We have to adopt an all or nothing. So.
So, it's 1,333 incidents.
And, and by far, the most numerous number of, of demands that I send out are for motor vehicle.
Yeah, sure, because they're small dollar amounts a lot of times.
Exactly, yeah. And, you know, they're just forgotten, and I get that, but.
Did you collect any, I'm sorry, did you collect any quicker when it was 15 versus 5? Is there an advantage?
There was, there was, there is that kind of double-edged sword there because when it went to 15, people seemed to become more timely in their payments. And, you know, I don't think it's a matter where we, you know, we make a differential as far as bad behavior, you know, yes, we would like taxes paid timely, but we did see a decrease in demand fee collections when we went to 15. And we may very likely see that in 2020 if we go to 30. I know a $30 hit would open my eyes a lot more than a $15 hit.
Well, I mean, when you think about, just in banking, and again, not that this has ever happened to anybody in the room, but if you, you know, if you overdraft your account, I mean.
Those fees have increased substantially.
$38 or something like that now for an overdraft fee. And again, the bank doesn't care if it was a $1,000 withdrawal, or if it was a $5 withdrawal, you still get hit with $38.
Right, so, I just wanted to.
I think people are used to it, I guess is my point, I hate to say that.
I know, but I think the four of you will get phone calls just as quick as I will.
Yep.
Did we put a warrant last time? When we went from 50 to 15?
It had to be, yes, it has to be a town meeting vote. And everybody just kind of went like, yep.
When did we do that?
Just in 2009.
Does it go on the tax bill that if you're late, there will be a $30 fee?
No.
Can you put that on the tax bill so people will read it?
Uh, no, because it has to be approved by DOR, and DOR recommends, or DOR approves the tax form bill, but not, they will not approve each individual towns because there are some towns that still charge $5 demand, they never increased it in '09. And then there are towns like South Hadley that immediately went to $30 in '09. So.
If you had to guess as a rule, what did most communities do?
Uh, they, they took the middle-of-the-line option like we did. So.
All right, so do you want us to vote on that?
It's on the agenda.
I don't know that you. Well, yeah, it's gonna be on the agenda, I just wanted to make you folks aware.
Oh, okay, all right, so we don't need to.
And I wanted to make sure everybody's on board.
I didn't shoot if you needed it.
You know. I just wanted to make sure everybody's on board with going to the 30.
Right, you don't want to be standing up on town meeting floor and then the select board all votes, no, I mean, that would.
Well, no, I don't want the select board to go, "What the hell is she doing?" Because.
She's kept us informed.
Right, so we'll, when we discuss the warrant article, then we'll take it up then, but.
We're informed and I am against it, so.
And John, you should be.
Okay, and then we also have, Marla has a DPW excavation trench permit that you're proposing, you want to explain that?
Down in the trenches.
Yes, and for, 2-2, we have, we actually have three permits that I'm requesting for adjustment on the fees. The last time they were looked at or adjusted was 2008 and before. What I've done with the, the public weigh-in trench permit, used to be two separate forms, I've combined it, it's a lot of the same information, so I've combined it to one form with two fee schedules on the form that can be checked off when the application is made out. The, the open public weigh was, was $25, and I'm proposing to move it to $60 per permit. The trench permit is $30, and I'm proposing to move to $80. I checked with six, six other communities, and it varied anywhere from $35 to $250 for each of these permits. So, then I looked at, what do we put in for time when we take in an application to go inspect a road or go inspect the town's public weigh when somebody exits it? So, I arrived at those numbers after reviewing, you know, in fairness to the time we put into it for myself or, or the field superintendent to go out and inspect the road, make sure it's being put back together properly for.
So, what are these, what are these trenches, Doug? I'm, I'm not really aware of the excavation of the trenches. What are they, what are they made, and are they kept on properties? And, and is the property's owner's responsibility to take care of these trenches?
Yes, when they dig in, okay, the trenching permit is when they dig into our roadway, let's say roadway. The open public ways, whether in our tree belt or sidewalk area, so on and so forth. I, I want to add that most of these permits are taken out by the utility companies, they need to trench across our street. So, in a big way, it, it doesn't affect the average homeowner or taxpayer. It's your gas company, your ever-sour, your phone, they, they want to trench across our roads all the time to ensure their utilities, so. And the road has to go back a certain way, otherwise, we have to live and own of that trench and maintain it if it's not put back together properly.
Better known as the frosty, if you see right now.
Yeah, so, and the other part of those two permits is, the old form was a one-page form, and I added, and I don't want to read the whole thing to you, but there, there's a lot that's changed since 2008 and before on trenching, shoring law, and ocean, and so on and so forth. So, I put some of the policy, some of that policy information on the permit so that the person or the company that's applying understands, you know, liability and have to follow the law, so. The other one was the driveway permit, and those were, those were running anywhere from 50 to, again, $200. So, I, I proposed to move it from 25 to 50, again, for the amount of time to process to go out and inspect once it's installed. So, I mean, that basically sums it up.
And what action are we looking for on this tonight?
Need to approve those.
Motion accepted. Motion accepted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Why, why do you have some of these roads in this flowable fill?
Though, that was the, the roads list we've always had, or the most recent list that I, I.
For flowable fill?
Yes.
That was passed in 2009?
Well, it said that that permit was looked at last in 2009, not necessarily updated or fees increased, John.
No, 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 I'm talking about the roads where you're recommending flowable fill.
That was the, that's the master list we've been following, I'm told. It was on the old permit. To be quite frank, that was a cut and paste, I didn't add or subtract anything. And again, it's a draft, if there's some field can come out there, we can take it on foot.
Yeah, I mean, Mill Valley's a pretty rough road. I don't know why you would flowable fill in Mill Valley Road.
I think it's high, high travel, and if they don't compact it properly, we have to live with it, phone calls.
Yeah, but flow, flowable fill's gonna create a frosty, if you put the material back, it's going to join to the road on both sides.
So, John, are you, does this have to do with the, are you asking him to modify the document or?
I don't know, I just, I'm looking at this list, and I was looking at it before last week, and I was wondering why some of these roads are on there, you know?
I'd actually like to make sure that, I'd like to see this updated, I think there's some new roads that have been put in since this was originally done, so that they're.
Yeah, exactly what I'm saying, you know, the new roads I can see, but, you know, a road like Draken Ridge, or like I said, Mill Valley, that are, the roads are trashed, they've never been rebuilt, there's nothing there, you know?
So, can.
There's tree stumps still in the middle of those roads.
So, do we want to approve it, subject to update of the?
It's up to Jerry, I'm gonna abstain from it, but I just have these questions.
Jerry, how do you feel about that?
I think that's what we should do, if we didn't, you know, update this. So, Megan's Way and things like that that are brand new roads that we have, I'd like to just, about them, the roads updated.
Okay, so you're modifying your.
Yes, please.
You know, you just.
Modify your second?
So, so to be clear on my marching orders here, you want an updated list of roads? Are we talking your highly traveled roads, we should be, roads we should be flowable fill? Are we talking age of roads?
I think that this, you've cut and pasted this list, and I don't think this includes some of the roads that have been added in the last three, four years. And I would like, I would like the list upgraded to include all the roads you feel should be on this list.
My, my opinion on that, and just as a precursor, my opinion is your highly traveled roads, your Loop 47s, your bay roads, your major arteries should be flowable fill. Your side streets, your secondary roads, in my opinion, I think they're fine by going with your standard six-inch lift compaction.
You know, that's what I'm saying, I'm looking at a low-odrive, like, should the low-odrive really be on there?
So, subject to, can you modify?
I mean.
Marla?
Yes, I mean, I can modify that back to four, five, six roads, it just depends, you know?
Okay, so, motion made in second, is it all in favor?
Aye.
Upstayed.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, let's see, Senior Center Library are two guys that really should be home doing some schoolwork, so. I am gonna pick.
Looks like they did a lot of schoolwork.
I'm gonna pick the Fire Department Junior Firefighter Program, where we have Mr. Liam Higgins, Mr. Gage Spanknebel, and their guest, the fire chief. I thought Gage was doing the presentation.
He will be, yes.
Oh, okay, you're gonna go, okay, sorry.
I still have a little bit to do.
All right.
Okay, so, thank you, yes. So, you already introduced them, thank you for stealing my thunder on that one.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. Anyways, you have the whole program, I've been working on this, trying to implement this for a number of years. And we have two juniors at Hopkins Academy that were looking for some community service, but then also they're interested in becoming firefighters at some point when they turn 18. So, I asked my son to start working on this project with me, and so Gage and Liam both took on the project and researched best practices, we've modeled it after a number of other junior firefighter programs. I can tell you right now that there's a number of communities that are very interested in what we're coming up with. So, the document's been presented to you and to David for review by legal, and I will hand it over to Gage and Liam.
Okay, so, I'm Gage, he's Liam, got that established. And Liam's gonna start off by telling a little bit about the program.
So, junior firefighting is pre-fire academy training, which inspires teenagers to think about the field of fire safety. These juniors will practice in non-fire, department-related training in events that give them a firsthand experience to what is means and to become a productive firefighter and give back to their community. We're the first, this is a brand-new program, me and Gage have put a lot of work into it. He's gonna explain the program introduction, the overview of what we are going to be creating.
So, kids often, like, very often ask me, like, what is junior firefighting and why it is important? As Liam said before, it's basically a pre-fire academy, which inspires kids to go into firefighting, but it's, they can go into even a broader category such as emergency medicine, state fire marshal, or even like an engineer at the fire department. There's numerous amount of reasons why this is a benefit and important. So, it basically provides a chance for youth to give back to their community and be involved in the community and to create a sense of togetherness, you can say, yeah. And it gives way to a new generation of firefighters. They're.
I was just gonna say, one of the things that we're like, really like, gonna be looking at is if kids, we're trying to give kids a chance to experience what it's like to be like around police and the fire department, like, some kids don't even know what it's like, and some kids go, "Oh, firefight, that might be a lot of work." But, we want to give them a chance to dip their fingers into it and really see if it's something that they want to do because if they get a chance to do so, then they might really become interested. And if you become a junior firefighter, you basically get a year of training. You begin at 16 and a half, and when you turn 18, you're legally able to go and assist, it's a support only, you will not be right up against the flames, that's not in our protocol, you will be supporting the firefighters though mainly.
Yeah, big support, any support on this already department is very beneficial to just making it succeed and grow, yeah.
So, with the son of a fire chief, he's very familiar with how much I'm going out all the time. You guys are familiar with the issue we have with recruiting call force firefighters? I can tell you that in the past, it was averaged that we would get at least two firefighters out of Hopkins Academy upon graduation, and that's gone down to zero as a standard, just, you know, they're off to college and they don't have the time to admit. So, what we're looking to do is try and initiate this at a young age, at 16, where they can come in and start seeing what's going on. And I'm hoping that it'll spur some folks that are planning maybe on staying in the area. I can also tell you that the city of Northampton, the 4H, Tom Wishdevitz had actually approached them about doing this program, and because they're a complete 100% full-time department, it was a little bit more logistically problematic for them. You know, they, they did try the program, but it wasn't working out quite well for them. So, the chief had sat down with me and we had discussed, I told him we were looking to do this, and it was the second step. So, he's very interested because he's willing to push maybe some folks our way if they're, you know, if they're willing and interested and they meet the requirements. And then also, the town of Hatfield is interested in looking at this one when we're done as well. So, I think they've put together, like I said, best practices, we're modeling it after some of the, some of the training and guidances, it's a national standard that they, they researched and put together. So, we're not, we're not just pulling this out of the air, we're using some really good, some good conventional material for it.
I know, I know you've heard it before, but I've been after the school committee for a couple of years now. You know, the people that are going off to college, if they're interested in wastewater, drinking water, fire department, police department, they're going out to get their degrees, maybe to think about their community and the service that they might have to give, to give back to them at some point, just like you guys are doing right now, you know?
So.
And it's been the first time in four years that, it's too bad the students have to take these incentives. I wish the school committee would really look at this and say, "We really need to get into this," you know?
Actually, I can tell you that Annie and I have been in some initial discussions, and I think she, she actually brought that forward, that we're working on, they're obviously working really hard on how they can, they can, you know, diversify at Hopkins to maybe see less folks going out to the trade schools. So, we're working closely with them to see if we can maybe bring in a program, which we're modeling after the city of Ware and another community out in central Massachusetts that has had really successful numbers with this, and bringing a whole new dimension into the schools for, you know, a really important profession that's really having a hard time, like you're saying, with, you know, water folks. It's the same thing in the fire service, we're not seeing the number of paramedics, not seeing the number of firefighters available. So, we're hoping that this will spark some of that interest.
So, just as a practical matter, I mean, from a supervisory standpoint, so you have X number of people interested in the program, how is the program going to be run within the department?
Yeah. Okay, so, what we're, what we're doing is either myself or an assigned officer will be responsible for overseeing this, so ultimately, I would be responsible for it. That's why it's such an extensive process for them to get on board. So, we would be sitting down with the parents, clearly explaining all this, so they have a full understanding of what we're doing here. Obviously, like we said, there's no, there's no fire experience here. This is strictly, they're coming to drills where they're not even climbing ladders over six feet high. We don't, we don't need to injure anybody at this point. So, anyway, so that's set up, so the oversight will be myself, my deputy. myself, my deputy, or, or one of the officers assigned to that. Uh, the junior firefighters themselves, uh, looking at best practices, is that they always have some sort of officer, um, that's in charge of that at their level. So, there would be two junior fire officers that would oversee their group, so that it's not adding on to us to, you know, send out emails, to send out training flyers, to, uh, we're looking at community service that they would be coming in to do, uh, keeping track of time, because you can see part of it is based on the number of hours they do, where they'd be receiving a stipend. Uh, so those folks are gonna be really busy with that, that portion. Um, there's no additional funding requested for this, it'll be coming out of my, my training and temporary wages. So, there's no additional funding being requested from the town. And, we've been in discussions on how many we wanna bring on board, what we feel is a good span of control, and we're gonna follow, uh, the incident command structure, we're looking between five and seven maximum that will be allowed.
Do you have others that are interested?
Oh, yes, there's been numerous amount of people that actually came up to me and asked about it.
Good.
It's great.
Well, great, super.
Any females?
Don't know yet.
You got other, other schools?
Gotta open it up.
Yeah, we had to get it running.
So, just to give you a little overview of what these gentlemen have already accomplished on top of other members of the Primarino, they were instrumental in our active shooter training at the mall. These were our victims and a number of other Hopkins Academy, uh, members. Uh, they've also, both of them were instrumental in helping with us get all those toys down to Trainers and to Bay State Children's this year, and, uh, the Santa Claus event with Park and Rec and everything, every chance they have, they've been stepping up and helping us with it. So, they're really showing that they, they really wanna move forward with this, and, um, just waiting to hear back from the legal side to make sure everything's in order.
Okay.
Just wanted to present that to you.
So, any, uh, any further questions for the gentleman?
Absolutely, a hundred percent in favor, but...
Absolutely. Okay, so, um, somebody wanna make a motion subject to legal review, obviously?
I certainly will make that motion. Welcome aboard.
Second.
With a little legal review.
Okay, motion made in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Great job, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks a lot, guys, you know, thanks again.
No, shout out to, uh, Jessica, Kelly, and Steve, who are sure glued to the set right now. Okay, so, we'll skip over the intent to convert for now, and can jump to the library and, and senior center updates? Yes, everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, uh, library?
Hi, so, we are here to get, first of all, your, um, stamp of approval, we hired last night, um, trustees voted to hire Mark Sullivan, of DA Sullivan, to be our OPM, and also to have DA Sullivan, um, be our clerk of the works. The contract has been passed through, dated, and through our attorney, we sent it to him, uh, when we received it, and the, um, trustees have voted in favor of it. Any other questions?
Well, the clerk of the works is usually a person, not a company, so how does that work?
Well, it's someone that will work for DA Sullivan.
Okay, so they're gonna be the hiring for the clerk of the works?
Yep.
Not necessarily, you know, if they have their own clerk of the works, or do they go out?
It is, it's an employee of DA.
Yeah, I think they're in house.
And this is all within, um, confines of your budget?
It is, they were, you know, a little bit higher than we had hoped, but it is within the confines of my budget.
Any questions on the hiring of DA Sullivan?
Were they the little bit, or...
So, they're continuing on from their services for planning and design, so...
Yeah, you, you guys went through a procurement process a while back on this one.
I'm huge in favor of that, rather than blaming each other.
Exactly, yeah. So, we have continuity, which is great.
Yep.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So, we'll...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, the second thing the library is asking for is the permission of the select board, um, to let us go forward with, without, um, of kind of giving your consent now that we get an architect, that we can just hire the architect. We expect, I mean, we are hoping it's the same architect that we had before, but we have to wait for the, you know, the bidding process and all of that to go through. Um, it would help the whole project, the seniors are anxiously awaiting an architect, so it would help us expedite matters if you would allow us to just let the trustees sign up on it and it move forward.
And are the trustees interviewing, or is it the building committee interviewing, or...
So, the way it will work, we, we actually made a mistake at first, we asked for a proposal directly from the architect, but actually the OPM acts as our owner's project manager. So, they, so Mark himself will negotiate with, um, Johnson Roberts.
Okay. Okay, does anybody have an issue with that? Yeah?
What you're leaning towards then is who you've had right along.
Yeah, and they were, they were fantastic, I mean, really. Yeah, we were very happy with them, we were really happy with the architect, we thought it was a good fit.
Worked well with the OPM.
Yep, but we obviously need to see a proposal, you know, we need to see their proposal before we say that.
You might wanna reach out to the municipal building committee to go give them an update as to what's going on there too, I'm sure that they...
Um, yeah, Allison updates them regularly, she actually talked to David Toodrum yesterday. So, yeah, we, we definitely keep them updated, we're looking for a, uh, one of, for a member of the municipal building to, to join our building committee, so, um, typically our building committee consists of a select board member, a building committee member, members of the town, a friends member, trustees, so we try to represent.
Okay, anybody wanna make a motion on that?
So, we'll...
Second.
Okay, moved in second, are all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, great, thank you. And the senior center, anything new?
Looking forward to working with their architect and library, architect and archi- architect and OPM to do the site plan for our project.
And we should say, I don't know if Molly has mentioned to you, that we actually are meeting on a regular basis, I don't know if you've told them that, but, um, aside from our separate building committees, we have a group that meets between the two organizations regularly, we're actually meeting tomorrow, so that we can always kind of keep in touch and compare notes. So, besides our OPMs working together, both, um, groups are working together.
And that meeting's tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
It's at four o'clock.
Four o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm supposed to be there, right?
In the senior center.
Okay.
What, what's ever?
One twelve, the senior center.
Thank you, okay. Uh, yeah, I didn't have it on my calendar, and I kept thinking, there's gotta be a meeting coming up here, so, okay.
We had it last week and the hot one this week.
Yeah.
And we, we just decided to meet as needed, and we felt that right now we needed more organization, there might be times when the, you know, a few weeks go by, but...
Yeah, I think, I think for some reason I've dropped off that thread, 'cause I couldn't find it, I don't know what happened, but, okay, so four o'clock tomorrow?
Yeah.
All right. Um, and then, uh, we should probably just give folks an update on the planning board meeting, um, from Tuesday, just to touch on that. Um, so, and, you know, there's an article in the paper too, so, at the planning board meeting on Tuesday night, um, there was a fair amount of dialogue regarding the, uh, relationship between the location of the senior center and the, the current legion. Um, and there were several members of the legion present at that meeting expressing concern about the possibility of lost parking space, given the planned location of the senior center. Um, and, so, again, there's a fair amount of, uh, comment at that meeting, and I know the Phil Polombo, your, your OPM, the senior community centers OPM was present to fill many of those questions, and then there was an agreement that, um, there was more work to be done. Um, it was offered to the legion to have a meeting, um, subsequent to that, to make sure that everybody's concerns were heard, you know, 'cause if a large planning board public meeting like that, there are a lot of people that pull you aside after and have things to say, so it seemed like it might be worthwhile to have a smaller meeting, but, um, you know, they, they declined that at this point, although that may occur in the future. So, I'd just be aware of the fact that there is some, some concern about that. Um, and obviously, if you saw the two petition warrant articles that got added today, that would be obvious, but I'm just mentioning it as part of this update. So, that's something that we'll continue to stay close to and try to continue to keep the folks at the legion engaged in this process to make sure we can find, um, some sort of cooperative solution. Jay?
We were disappointed that, that the, um, conversation today could not, did not happen, and would like a little direction, I guess, from the select board, since you have appointed our committee. I'm assuming, in the, um, best interest of time and money, we should continue forward with our plan to build a senior center as our schedule is now scheduled.
Good. That's my assumption, that, I mean, at this point, we're responding to multiple town meeting votes in favor of the senior center, and then, again, I would just speak for, for myself, I don't wanna put words in anybody else's mouth, but, um, yeah, we're neighbors, and, and I'm hoping that we find resolution to the issue. Uh, no one's interested in, in harming any other civic organization, um, certainly not veterans, but again, y-you have to be present to have the conversation, so, um, you know, certainly if anybody else feels differently, but the presumption is we've, we are charged with getting these buildings up and running, and we're on a tight timeline. Um, so I'm assuming that we're moving forward.
Regardless of how we feel about anything the town has voted, we need to go forward.
Yes.
But that's our job.
The only one, the only one question I had, um, when that property was surveyed, was the easement surveyed?
The easement, yes it was.
Okay.
Actually, you did a second survey of the easement.
The sewer easement?
No.
The right-of-way.
The right-of-way.
Yes, the thirty.
Because the right-of-way is thirty feet.
Yes.
Correct.
The other way, that's a whole nother row of cars if you were going to go with the original driveway cut.
Well, so, it, we originally went with a new curb cut.
Yeah.
Then, we heard from the legion, and they said you're gonna lose a whole row of cars.
They're not.
So, talking with the fire chief and the police chief, we redesigned it, we'll use the existing curb cut for the emergency entrance. The cars will stay parked there, and the road will be, it will still be parking up, but it will be striped to indicate, don't park here, this is, you know, in and out.
Yeah.
So, um, Josh, you, are you in agreement, that we're just, we're continuing to move with these projects?
Yeah, I mean, that's what the town meeting has determined.
Town meeting, votes?
Votes.
And, yeah, from the voters, yeah. Yeah, so that's, I mean, that's our position at this point. Um, again, as things develop, as things come up, um, we just need to stay in really close contact. Jen, Jerry, you're sitting on their, their building committee, right? And then we have the joint meeting, um, where I'm present, David are present between the two committees, and I'm on the library building, so, we'll just keep these updates coming to make sure you guys are kept abreast of it.
And will you also continue to try and have a conversation where the legion can be involved in...
I reached, I reached out, uh, to them today, after the cancellation, and made it clear that, you know, certainly from my standpoint, and, and that we would discuss it tonight, but I, I thought that the, that we were very much open to continuing that dialogue, or, I should say, continuing having a dialogue, um, I guess, you know, continuing some of the, uh, understanding of some of the concerns expressed on Tuesday night, so... Yeah, so we'll, we'll stay the course on that and see how it goes.
Good. I don't think you really answered my question, but, the easement, are you going to put parking on that easement now?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that was, that was the only question I had, was what I could get out of the meeting I watched.
Yes, we're gonna have parking on that easement. It's after we've dug it up.
There's a lot of misinformation, and we'd love to fill you in if you had any questions.
No, 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 I just, I'm, that was the only real question I had, because it looks like there's probably room for twenty more cars over there, if all those trees are moved and that easement's, uh, being accessed, you know, to its full length.
There is an ADA requirement that we have sidewalk, that will go right along the trees, they'll be lit up because the owner, Mr. Coach, doesn't want to have them cut down, although we offered to pay for that and replace them.
They're on town property.
They're all Coach's property.
No, they're on the easement.
So, so one thing I'd, I'd actually like to propose, and it's, maybe it's a discussion for tomorrow's four o'clock meeting, but, I think sooner rather than later, we should really find a way to have some sort of a public meeting about these projects. Um, there's so, embrace yourselves, there's a lot of misinformation floating, floating, floating around, you know?
We have a forum scheduled in the room saved at Hopkins for the fifteenth floor.
But, and that's what I've been telling people, that I thought...
Is that too far out?
I, I don't know, so, we should probably talk about it tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, maybe we need to do something, maybe we need to do a couple, just because...
The, the driveways and all of that, the DPW just received the plans for the Route Nine project, so maybe we should really take a look at, at what's there, make sure it matches up what the building committee's got going on over there at the Legion parking lot. I haven't got to that page yet, but...
Well, mostly we're just going underneath it, and, yeah, and we'll be done long before Route Nine comes along.
And there have, there have been, um, I know I've received a couple of phone calls with people who have some questions or suggestions about the design, or, you know, whatever, so we'll, I'll make sure those continue to be funneled to the, the building committees too, so we can get that to people. I think that goes a long way too.
It might help us if you explain the letter that went out last week too, and, uh, regarding donations that can be made available. I got some phone calls that said we designed a senior center that didn't have windows built into it, because of the way of the letter is sent out, so if we can clarify, to help clarify...
So, one of the things you saw in the warrant article night was, tonight was, an article to accept money from the Friends of the Hadley Council on Energy. Um, because of the town's tight budget, really, after salaries are paid and basic expenses, there are no, no monies left for programs. And so, all of the money that makes things happen, events happen at the senior center comes from the Friends. The building will be built with windows and doors and all of that, this is a fundraising opportunity for the Friends, it has nothing to do with the construction of the building or the contents of the building, but if you wanna have the divine name on a door plaque, we'd be happy to take your money and use it for prints, that's what, that's all it is.
Shouldn't he be on a window and not a door? Why'd you think about...
Well, we're looking for someone for the men's room.
Oh.
And you're on the committee!
Jerry Divine.
That's awesome.
Anyway, that's, that's what that's...
That was a fundraising aspect.
It's a fundraising aspect, it has nothing to do with the building and its construction, that is covered, we have budget, we're happy to say, the estimates came in for the design development phase, and we're online.
Yeah, and I've asked that, uh, Council Nation coordinate with the treasurer to make sure that the, uh, donations by the Friends are handled according to municipal financial law, and that there's no misunderstanding, so, this is what we did with the library, this is what we're gonna be doing with the senior centers, so...
Okay.
The other, the other thing that I, just from that meeting, was that, I, I think that, uh, people were concerned that there was no follow-up to, uh, the properties that are directly adjacent, as far as whether or not the select board reached out after we had gone out to see if anybody that was adjacent properties was willing to sell their land. And I personally, uh, met with the abutter to there at the best of the select board, um, and wasn't able to get anybody to move off anything as far as, uh, purchasing the land that was there, and that's what we were, you know, obviously looking for. But I met myself personally, we had our discussions, and, so, there's misinformation that most people would never spoke to. I did not speak to the Bye family, only because it's not directly adjacent to what we're purchasing, it doesn't make sense that we leapfrog a piece of property to talk about a second piece of property, but the direct...
That we can't do anything with anyway, at this point.
The direct abutter I, I met with personally, and, and I know that, for some reason, uh, people don't feel like that happens, so...
So, it's not too early to say then that the, the, um, town property that's a parking lot now is not still going to remain a parking lot, is that true?
The current design of the senior center had the senior center all the way to the east end of the property, given the forty-foot setting setback, um, and that's what's now trying to be under discussion with the legion. To, to move the pro-
Move to...
To possibly move the building westward.
To protect some of the parking proximate to the legion.
So, put most of the pro- parking for the senior center towards the legion side?
No, most of the park, the senior center, if we changed everything around, it would cost like three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
Let's go back to why it was designed, where it was designed.
It was designed...
That was put all the way on that end of the property so that the two functioning areas could utilize both parking there, so that the senior center and the library would be able to utilize the parking lot, and we could have a one-way directional traffic flow as it went through there. Also, the senior center designed for the entrance to the senior center is set up with overhangs and overheads and bollards. It's pretty, so that there's not any driving incidents that occur, and people are able to get out of their car and walk underneath and out of the rain and out of the weather so that they can go into the building. Financially, it doesn't make sense to do that on both sides, and if we split the parking up on both sides, it's A, more expensive, and takes away from the utilization from the library to be able to use the parking lot as well. That's why it was set up that way. There was an absolute reason. It was thought out. The process had been gone to. We talked about setting that up. Other places within the location there, it just didn't make sense. And from, personally, I as a select board member, as the custodians of all the buildings in the town of Hadley, would be happy to memorialize that the Legion be able to use the parking lot of the senior center when they need to. There's going to be, need to be some coordination there so that they don't overlap. And I, hopefully, people saw a little bit of that meeting the other day, but as Jane had said, that there will be a walkway that's established. It needs to be there by law now or by design now, so that with lighting, people would be able to walk from the senior center parking lot over across the brand-new parking lot, including the thirty-foot right of way that Mr. Waschkevitz has talked about, so it's a pretty, it's a much better system than what's available there. Is there slightly more walking? Absolutely, absolutely. On the, upon the design of that, there'll still be 36 spots of parking left at the American Legion, based on the design that Phil had put together, so we don't want anybody to think all the parking's going away there or that some of the senior, most members that utilize the facility over there are going to have to be walking from the senior center. Needs to be some coordination. It was done for specific reasons, to take care of the needs of the town and the entire town, and I don't think the Legion was not included in the process. It's just, to the best of our ability, or the best of the ability of the designers, it was set up the way it was set up.
And I would think it would be to the Legion's advantage to go through that parking lot and not exit on Route Nine at those two entrances, because it's hell to get out of there. You know, they come around the middle street and go out to the lights.
That would be an option.
So again, hopefully, hopefully we can-
We've extended the hour.
Bring folks to the table and not, not let this perpetuate too much longer, because we do need to move forward.
We look forward to that.
Yeah, going to lose the bite of the apple, yeah. Okay, so thank you for the update.
Actually, I had one thing to this week. The, a few, a couple of the barmen hats were going to be here at the previous meeting that was canceled due to snow. We were going to talk about fundraising, I believe that we have, we're all sort of working in concert to not be seen as what, being in competition with each other, with fundraising is concerned. And I just wanted to ask the select board, that you could be very helpful to us in the sense of supporting our fundraising efforts simply by, you know, acknowledging gifts that come in. You know, we'd like to pass information to you to make sure that the public is aware of the generosity of the residents when they make a donation or-
Sure, we could do that as part of this standing item. Great, yeah, we'd be happy to do that, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Jane, I'm only doing one minute.
For your personal.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, we've got the ambulance service update. Yeah, so just bring-
You're having a meeting tomorrow night?
Just bring the select board up to speed where we are at with that. So we met, remember, we went out for bid. We had the one proposal. The proposal came from Action EMS. Action EMS came in, did a great presentation. It was very well received by the work group. But price tag was certainly more than what we're paying now, but also the services that they were proposing, that they provide were different from what, and more significant than what Amherst is currently providing to us. We then invited Amherst to come in, even though they hadn't proposed on it, and we had that meeting. It was, it was a positive meeting. They provided us with some updated data points that we hadn't actually seen before in terms of response times and number of overlapping calls, you know, when there might be multiple calls going on in Hadley. It was nothing that we had actually seen previously. So that meeting went well, but they also made it clear at that meeting that, you know, they, I think the terminology was that they felt that the market has spoken and aren't necessarily tipping their hand relative to, you know, we're paying 140 now, whether or not, you know, 140 is going to become 145 or 150 from them, or if they want to jump us now to a significantly higher number. And so jury's still out on that one, so we talked after they left and agreed that we thought it made sense, given that we had like apples and oranges to compare, that to finish this all off, it was appropriate to ask Action to say, look, you know, these are the services that we're getting from Amherst right now. Could you give, easy there, could you give us, take a look at that and try to look at something that's more comparable so that we're, you know, have a fair comparison? So Action did that via a four-page memo, and tomorrow night at six o'clock. No, go ahead, go four o'clock, eight, four o'clock, six o'clock. So at six o'clock tomorrow night, we're meeting again, just to pour through that memo to determine whether or not that will lead us to say, okay, this makes no sense. We need to stay the course with Amherst at this point, or any other action that might be taken there. So that's where we're at. All right, Joycey?
That's it.
That's it in a nutshell. Anything you want to add?
Do you think now that we've got all the apples on the table, it'd be worth going out to bid again?
Well, let's have our discussion tomorrow night. We'll bring them back together.
I think that's a big part of our discussion tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. And then, let's see, we have cemeteries?
Oh, we're going to skip over the cemetery.
That's right, we're skipping over cemeteries.
You're sleeping, you want to go into the cemetery?
No.
No, we're skipping over that.
I'm not sleeping.
So we have 434 River Drive, Chapter 61A, intent to convert. David?
So we have land that's currently in Chapter 61A, coming out of that status. We have the right of first refusal. Our recommendation is to waive that right of first refusal and to waive the 120-day waiting period in which the town may exercise that right of first refusal.
And this is a half-acre parcel, David, you want to describe?
It's only half an acre that's coming out of 61?
Something like that.
Half an acre.
Half an acre, to include in the sale of other property. Okay, so this is 434 River Drive in Hadley.
Yeah, we have no, we have no use for this.
Well, you don't have to disparage the half acre.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying it like that. It's that there's no municipal use for that property, so.
All right, anybody still moved? Still moved? Is there a second?
Where exactly is this?
It's a settlement property. This is the day house, or out for house.
That's the little green one in the middle?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there a second in this?
John, we're waiting for you.
Yes, I'll second you.
Jesus.
Any further discussion? I'm always curious from Jerry's the silence, so.
There's a reason.
Are you going to abstain, is there a?
I was lost, yeah.
I'm buying the property. I got to abstain.
Wait a minute, that little fire station thing up?
All right, all in favor? Aye.
I abstain.
Yeah, always make me nervous when you're abstaining, like, what?
You guys are playing your cards that nobody studied that piece of information very well.
No, I did. That's why I moved it. You didn't read it?
Yeah, I did, but I didn't remember.
No, I didn't read the whole thing. I just looked at the map quick.
Yeah.
See, I didn't see it on the board here.
All right. Okay, so we do have executive session. Is there anything else we need to cover this evening? Okay, David, nothing in your report. We'll read that and get back to you with any questions?
All town meeting, all the time.
And other things. So, any announcements before we move to executive?
I just want to thank everybody that was involved with the Fragile X fundraiser that was held at the American Legion in town of Hadley. It was a wonderful event. I really appreciate all the help from every, all the Legionnaires and all the people who were volunteers to help with it. Raised the $1,500, which will be put in the right direction. Thanks, everybody involved.
Okay, I guess I have a few this evening. We haven't had a meeting for a couple of weeks, so we've had a few passings in Hadley, and I'd like to extend our condolences to people. The family of Eleanor Karish, the family of Leo Blisniak, John McCresky, whose sister is Elvira Balut, Jane Meekum, and she was a Topper. And we also had Randy, Randolph Willie Brodhurst, who was a Legion member and marched in every parade. He was there last year.
Every town meeting.
Every town meeting.
Every town meeting, he was there, and, so he passed, and surely be missed this year at the, for the parade also. So condolences to all of their families. And we also had the passing of George Ritter from Hockenham, husband of Norma, who were big into helping with the Mardi Gras every year. George was from down in that area and brought his-
Knowledge.
New Orleans and brought that up here with him and did a great job at the senior center in doing that. He was also past member of the board for the senior center and an abudsmen for many years, serving on the COA board for quite some time. So, you know, we extend our condolences to Norma and their family also.
Okay, nothing else? All right.
Motion, Chair?
Make a motion to go into executive session, yes, for the purpose of contract negotiation with respect to collective bargaining. We will not reconvene in open session.
Okay. Ms. Chair, I state that holding this discussion in open session could have a detrimental impact to the town of Hadley.
We'll call a vote. Mr. Waschkevitz, I believe you have a conflict of interest?
Yes, but I can still vote to go into executive session until that time.
Okay, so Mr. Waschkevitz?
Yes.
Divided?
Yes.
Do you?
Yes.
John vote?
Yes.
All right, your-
All right, night, everybody. Thank you.
Good night.